Okay. Mr. Fuller has let us know that he will be a few minutes late, so I'll begin the meeting, Chair, until he gets here. So I'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:32. And the first order of business is Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any comments from any -- oh, Mr. Fuller's here? We just got the comments, and I'll turn the meeting over to the Chair, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late. It's like busy with the Hayfield. Are there any comments from the Board on topics not on the agenda? Well, I just want to thank Brandon and the office staff for the packet this week in getting everything together. It was a really good packet. Thank you, guys. Anybody else? Any comments? I had a conversation with Brandon this morning, and I said the very same thing. And so I didn't run this by him, but it shouldn't come to a shock. I would like an executive session at the end with him included for personnel and just to go over some things that he's done. I know he's told me before his former employer had that done quarterly, and I think it's been a few months. I don't think it's anything distressing, but there may or may not be action after that. But I like to keep on the same page. But I did say the same thing, Paul, to him, where I saw -- I kept away from the town stuff this weekend on purpose. And then when I looked this morning to see that packet, I think it'll be very valuable going forward for all of our information. And it's a work in progress, and it's fine. It hasn't been audited, but at least we need to know where we were and onto where we're going, so.
You want to do that executive session after any other business?
Yeah, at the end of the meeting.
Yep, okay.
Is there -- is there any other comments from the Board that's not on the agenda? Okay, Brandon, did you have anything that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I just want to thank Yamaha and the Chamber of Commerce. We went to a meeting last week, and they -- Yamaha donated three of these Bluetooth conference speakers to the town. One for the school, one for the library, and one for the town. And they're donating them to schools and towns all over Vermont. So I just want to thank Yamaha. Also, the last music event is this Friday at Hoyzington Field, and that's between 6:00 and 8:00. This is the 12th one and the last one. And Friction Farm is the performer this week. So if anybody can make it out there, it should be a good time. That's all I have.
I have one other one, and it's not on the agenda for tonight. So it what we -- the previous meeting, we did speak about ARPA funds, which is the Recovery Act funds that are coming into the town. They're scheduled on a two-year payment. I think Brandon notified me that the second payment had made it here. And I asked him to meet with other town managers in the area to kind of coordinate, to see what they were doing on behalf of those. And he said, "It's funny you mention that," because that's exactly what he had a conversation with Tom Marsh, who's the Windsor Town Manager as well. So that's an ongoing conversation where we're going to be going with those funds, or in the public will certainly be able to weigh in. So that's where kind of that's at right now. So and he does from time to time meet with other town managers, which I've encouraged him to do, to share information or to learn whatever, so. Is there any comments from the public? Anybody here from the public that is not on the agenda? Tracy, hi.
I was wondering if we can discuss the paving on Kendrick's Corner now rather than later, being that there's a lot of residents from Kendrick's Corner?
I have, just so everybody can be clear, the -- when Paul was asked about it, and then Joey was offline and kind of started talking about Tenny Hill Road, I purposely lumped it together to have a conversation with the highway, and obviously it has to do with financing. And then in our packet, Brandon had a list of -- and I've not seen that in a long time, so it's very impressive with the list of the roads as well. So I'm not -- I'm not sure that any particular road is going to come up before financing about how to, you know, where the year-end was, the alleged, or it's not audited yet for the financial year 21 ended. We've not made a decision on financing. And that particular road project was put out to bid, and the dollar amount was a significant number over the amount that was in total into the reserve account. So I -- what -- go ahead.
I had something off of this subject real quick, if I could. I just wanted to give an update on the Ransay project. We completed the first segment that we were awarded to do and came into their budget. So now we're starting on the road. I had it approved last week. Just wanted to let you guys know we're now working on Cascade Falls Road, trying to get that segment, those segments done.
But let's stay on the question. What does the Board feel about just jumping into, or I suppose we can take up any comment about a road. It is on the agenda. But we do have to talk about the financing part of any. Go ahead, Brandon.
Can we take up a vote to transfer Town Clerk and Parks and Recs fund balance to the reserve accounts first and then Highway? Because Mr. Hyer is here as well for this agenda topic.
Yeah, and I'm happy to stay coordinated with the discussion. Paul, go ahead. Just a quick question. So obviously, we talked about financing, but do you need to go through any of the other, the General Fund 2021, '22 balance and things like that before you get to that?
No, no, no.
Okay. So my recommendation obviously would be the same, too. Let's quickly do the one with Steve, and then if we could move the Highway up, I'd move the --
I'm sticking around beyond this subject, so you don't have to.
Okay, cool.
I appreciate the thought of letting me get out, but I'm going to stick around for some of the other discussions, so.
Either way, we do have residents here, so I'd like to move up, move the Highway up at least, if I --
You want to make that number six?
Yeah. Let's go, let's start then knocking it off, so it doesn't take so much longer. Let's go to the minutes. So I'll take that in note, and we will move up, but let's knock off a few things before we get to Highway. Let's look at the minutes of -- or does anybody else have any comments on anything other than not on the agenda?
I was going to make a motion to move 10 to number six.
You don't need to. I'll, without objection, I'll do it.
Okay.
It is on the agenda, so it's not a topic that's off the agenda.
Okay.
Somebody make a motion to approve the minutes of --
So moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of September 7, 2021. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, let's go to number five, which is to transfer the -- let's take them one at a time. The Town Clerk fund balance to a reserve account. I don't know whether I'll recognize Steve or Brandon or one, whoever wants to take that up, please. Let's take the Town Clerk first.
Well, I think this has come to you every year, sort of a routine series of transfers that get done at the end of every year. And so there's a spreadsheet, I think, that's in your packet that lists all of those. There are a few more than specifically the Town Clerk and the -- what's the other thing that was mentioned, the Parks and Rec. But if you look on that sheet, the first four items listed are reserve funds that involve the Town Clerk, although the fourth one is voting equipment, and we haven't apparently we haven't budgeted any money for voting equipment for a number of years. So there's really, that's really on the list, just to remind us every year to make sure if we budgeted money, we should transfer it. So the first three, we have three reserve funds. We have a reserve fund for vault usage, a reserve fund for municipal records, and a reserve fund for land and vital records. And those are funded by a recording fee, a $15 recording fee. And the state has not mandated, the state has allowed towns to set up these three reserve funds and to charge the fee that would fund those reserve funds. So every recording fee is $15. I think 10 of it goes to the vault fund. Anyway, it's divided among those three funds. So customarily, we estimate what we're going to, think we're going to get in revenue. We never hit that exactly. So at the end of the year, if there's more revenue than what we've already transferred, we generally transfer the balance of that revenue. So that's what this request is. You can see the three amounts. It's about eight or $9,000 total among the three.
So do we have an exact one for the Town Clerk? So when the motion is made, that it can be exact?
Is it the first three, Steve?
What's that?
Is it the first three?
It would be the first three, yeah. I didn't realize you wanted them set up separately, so I just totaled the grand total.
And that grand total, when that happens, that would include the Parks and Rec? Is that what you're saying?
It would include everything that's on that list.
Oh, so we're, so you're saying even for reappraisal? Or no? Is that, that was already transferred?
No, that's balance to transfer.
What's the 18,000? $18,374.72 is what I see way down at the bottom. Is that the total that we're transferring?
Well, no, the net total is $58,9872.
Where's that?
Do you have a different?
You must, I don't see that on here, so that's why.
Yeah, I don't see that.
On my spreadsheet.
$58,9872.
Well, maybe we better do what Dave says, said there or suggested, and go ahead with the Town Clerk, the three lines for the Town Clerk to start with. That's my suggestion, whatever you want to do there, Mr. Chair.
Is that the column that's underneath the yellow? The vault usage?
That's what I'm adding up.
The municipal records and the land and vital records? Those three are totaled as the clerk?
The top three, the vault fees, computerization, and preservation. And the balance to transfer is yes, in the column 34.
And that comes down to 8137.
Even?
Yes. Are there any other columns or lines anywhere associated? Because mine ends at 18,000, and you've got 50-something thousand over there. Are there any other fees or categories that need to transfer under the Town Clerk?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to transfer $8,137. And now where is the, where are these transferring to? Just to reserve account?
To go into the reserve funds, yes, into those three reserve funds. The vault usage, municipal records, and land and vital records reserve funds.
So each one of those amounts goes into that certain reserve for that thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So the vault fees go into the vault usage fund, the computerization fee goes into the municipal records fund, and the preservation fee is going to land and vital records.
Dave, you want those done as three separate numbers?
Do you have that noted, DeForest, on the breakdown of the motion? Or can you do that, please?
I can.
Yep.
Do you need the numbers, DeForest?
That would be awesome.
Vault fees, 2,704.26. Computerization, $3,636.74. Preservation, $1,796. Yes. That totals $8,137, and I make the motion to transfer those funds.
I'll second.
Good motion been made and seconded to transfer $8,137 from the, and let me get this right, Steve, from the June 30, 2021 fund balance, right? So it ended June 30.
Yeah.
It's not into this fiscal year.
No, this is all going to happen at the end of last year, which is on June 30.
Right, yep, yep. To the reserve accounts. So we're taking out of?
Taking out of the General Fund, moving it to the reserve.
Going to reserves. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there a Parks and Rec fund here that, because that's what's warned, amount to be transferred as well to the reserves? Is it 6,900?
That's the Tenny Memorial. We received a $30,000 grant payment from the state to establish the Tenny Memorial. As of June 30, we'd only spent just a little over $23,000. So there's just under $7,000 left in that fund. So we have incurred expenses since June 30, but that money expires on June 30 and either goes back into the General Fund unless we move it to a reserve fund. But we don't have a reserve fund established for the Tenny Memorial because we didn't know there was going to be a Tenny Memorial until we got the $30,000, and it requires a vote of the taxpayers to establish a reserve fund. So our thinking is, we still want to reserve that $69.90, $69.6672 for, to finish the Tenny Memorial and then to use to upgrade the Tenny Memorial. So what makes sense is to transfer that money into the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund, since essentially the memorial is a town park or recreation area.
How do we make sure that we keep that money designated for the Tenny Memorial?
Well, you don't.
Can we put it up for vote at the next town meeting and then move it into a Tenny Hill?
You could, you could.
Would that work okay?
Yeah, if there's any left, yeah.
What do you mean, if there's any left?
Well, I mean, we've already had additional expenses, and so I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I see, it's just a general fund balance?
Yeah.
To make sure that it doesn't get, okay?
So that was the number, the date of 6:30. So what you're saying is?
6:30, right. $6,966.72 was what we hadn't spent out of that state payment.
I'm agreeing with you a little bit by trying to track that so that it doesn't get lumped off, and the state may in fact ask for an audit of the money that they gave us. What did you do with it? And you need to show them. And if you lump it into another account and then say, "Well, here it is, but not really."
We have two choices. It either stays in the General Fund, gets absorbed at the end of the year into the General Fund fund balance, and anything we spend this year gets charged to the new General Fund budget, as it'll be an over expenditure. Or we reserve the money for the purpose for which it was intended. And the only way to do that, we have to put it into an existing reserve fund. Parks and Rec makes the most sense. There's not a lot of money there, there's not a lot of activity there, and so it's probably the best place we can put it where we can identify.
Can you track it as a line item in the Parks and Rec budget? Is that the simplest way to do it?
In the reserve fund?
Yes.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yes. So what do you, what do you think, just out loud, for conversation purposes, is left? I just learned that $1,690 is in there as of 6:30, but you had other bills, and it's already September 1st, so what did you spend beyond, already, what's left?
So we probably spent about another $1,500 to $2,000, and there's about $2,500 worth of work remaining. And that work consists of planting bushes outside of the pavilion. Brockridge Farm Woodworks is currently carving a sign made out of the memorial tree that says "Romaine Tenny Memorial," and that will be on the pavilion. We want to add signage next to the stump, just a small sign that says "Memorial Tree." And then the Tenny relatives will receive plaques that were made out of the memorial tree. All of this was included in the grant?
Yes.
From the state. So the state gave us the grant to do these things. And the last part are the plaques. So I think after all that's done, there'd probably be, like Steve was saying, not much, between $3,000 and $4,000 at the end of this year.
Is there a motion on the floor yet to transfer $6,966.72 from the General Fund, which was allocated from the Tenny Memorial in a grant, to the Parks and Rec Reserve Account? If there's not a motion on the floor, I'd like to hear one.
Why would we make a motion? We were just told there's probably another couple thousand dollars that's already been spent, so we can't transfer that much money.
I think we have to, because it's going to be in a new financial year.
Oh, just dealing with a moment, okay.
Yes.
Now, is it possible, Steve, to track that as a line item in the Parks and Rec budget?
We could set up a separate, well, within the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund, we could set up a separate line and do it that way.
Even if we only did that through March, you know, if the voters want to create it, if you wanted it to go that way, to create a Tenny Memorial Reserve, I don't know, maybe you, I think maybe you're right. The best place for it is to leave it and track it there.
Yeah, I don't want to leave it in the General Fund. Steve already outlined for us that we have two choices.
All right, so make a motion for, to transfer $6,966.72 from the General Fund budget surplus fiscal year 2021 to the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to transfer $6,966.72 from the General Fund balance as of 6:30, 21, to the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund, as noted with a line item outlined in the Tenny Tree Memorial. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that, well, those are the two warned things, Steve, for the things. I'm not sure, I guess we'd need clarification beyond if it was going to be like $50,000 compared to the 18 that we have in front of us for a transfer.
Well, there are four other transfers on the list. They're not specifically Parks and Rec or Town Clerk. One is related to the listers, there's, and the other are, well, I guess rabies is related to Town Clerk.
Yeah, it is.
Just for clarification, did you say 50,000 or 5,000?
I said, I don't think I said either of those numbers.
Didn't you, what was the number that you said? Because it was a lot different than 18, 374.72.
Oh, the net of what we're doing is about, is $5,898.72.
5,000, okay. I thought you added a zero.
We're going to end up in the right place.
Because we have to, I think we have the same, I think we have the same list, except, Brandon, you may have added a total on there.
I think, I think you added the total, and if, maybe if, I did add the total. I'm sorry.
Because most of these are, we're transferring out $18,000 from the General Fund, but one of these transfers is reimbursing the General Fund for work done on the salt shed. So we're moving $12,000 into the General Fund, so the net is about $6,000 worth of activity. That's where my number comes from. But if you, there should be four other items on the list you have. There's a line item called property reappraisal. Is that on your spreadsheet? And?
ARN.
And then there's aid to residents in need, conservation, rabies, and unspecified reserve. Those are the four that are on the list that we haven't talked about yet.
What does the Board want to do? Technically not warned, but I mean, I absolutely believe that the rabies is handled by the Town Clerk. I don't know about residents in need. So what would you be looking to transfer from each one of those, Steve?
Well, property reappraisal?
Yep.
We estimate what, it's a grant that comes from the state that gets moved into the reserve fund. We estimate how much we're going to receive in the grant, and we transfer that amount early in the year. But the grant is never the amount we estimate. So this year, the grant was $909 more than what we estimated, so we need your approval to put that additional $909 in the property reappraisal reserve fund.
What does the Board want to do? I'm okay with doing that. I mean, it's not a significant amount of money. It was granted for that, it was granted for that purpose. I'd rather leave it targeted for that purpose. That way, the auditors or our own financial staff.
Make a motion to move that money into the reserve.
$909.
Yeah, $909.
Allocate, okay. Motion been made and seconded to approve the transfer of $909 as of, again, 6:30, 21, to the reappraisal reserve fund for the town. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move to $362 for rabies.
So under the Town Manager.
Under the Town Clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the transfer of $362 for rabies, which is under the Town Clerk supervision, to the reserve fund. Is there, what is, what is the, is there designated like an animal reserve fund?
Well, there's a rabies reserve fund.
Okay.
To prevent it, not to encourage it. Basically, it's a dollar, every dog license, a dollar is for the rabies fund.
Okay.
So including $362, because we registered $362 dogs this year.
Is there a second to the motion?
There was.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded to approve the transfer of $362 from the rabies fund as of 6:30, 21, to the rabies reserve account handled by the Town Clerk. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aid to residents in need, there's a?
We budget every year, every year, the General Fund budget has a line item in it for aid to residents in need, and it's usually $2,000, and that's what it was last year. So what we have done historically is, if we don't spend all that $2,000, we transfer it into the reserve fund. If we spend more than the $2,000, we take money out of the reserve fund. So we had no requests. We didn't spend anything for aid to residents in need this last year. So the request is to move that entire $2,000 into that reserve fund.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to take $2,000, which was budgeted in the General Fund at the year-end, again, 6:30, 21, to the reserve account to aid for residents in need. Any discussion? I would note that the fund balance before the transfer now is $3,515, so after that it would be 5,000. So where does that stand, Brandon, with that? I mean, do we, that's significantly higher than, right? I mean, we do, I don't want to encourage people to apply, but they will if they have a hardship. I would like that.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure that that needs to keep getting built up to like a large amount of money that we don't necessarily keep. Any other comments?
It seems, it seems odd at some level that during the pandemic, we didn't have any requests. But I think there was a lot of money that was available to folks to access during the pandemic. So perhaps there were other sources of funds that they didn't need to request from us.
Is, is there a description on the town's website of this account and what the, what people can request for assistance for? Is there, is there somewhere for people to?
I don't think so. My recollection is that the, the trustees, uh, some different level, there are, that have handled that before. Because, I mean, I've been contacted by Betty Adams before. Trustee of public funds, sometimes they will get requ- I think maybe BJ Esty might be one now, so.
We consolidated this a few years ago because we have this fund plus the other, a couple of funds that trustees manage that are to, for residents in need. And so rather than having people try to go to three different funds, we've kind of established a paperwork process and a form so that that's all together. You, you request assistance and we figure out which of the funds it's going to come from.
To answer your question, though, I don't think there's any, I don't recall any like criteria to who meets. Because, I mean, I've had, I can recall in the past having conversations about trying to do the right thing. And then it turned out to be like a resident from like Knott Weathersfield and it was like far away. So, so, so it was a little more complicated than.
Well, I think there's, there, there needs to be internal handles, you know, people need to come in if they can. But there ought to be some sort of way for people to know that we, we have a way to help them if, if somebody needs maybe some fuel assistance or.
Yeah, that's.
They haven't got any, they got three kids and no money, they need food. Uh, you know, anything like that, that there needs to be some way to find out, you know, at least who to talk to if you need help. So you can get that help. That's all.
Well, we'll try to figure that out. The motion's been made and seconded to approve this transfer. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that it, Steve?
Well, there's one more.
Okay.
And it's the reverse of what we've been doing. It's bringing money out of the reserve fund into the general fund. So we had repairs to the salt shed, twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I believe the intention was for that money to come from the unspecified reserve, the so-called rainy day fund. And so if that was your intention, then you should authorize us to transfer twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-six from the rainy day fund to the general fund.
To, to the general fund or the highway fund?
Highway fund.
My bet, my bet would be highway.
That, that should be highway.
General fund.
Yeah, the rainy day fund is in the, is in the general fund. It's not in the highway.
I know that, but the salt shed is in the highway.
But the general fund has to pay the bill, not the highway.
Uh, well, I, I don't know. Does anybody?
I believe the expenses for the salt shed were charged to the general fund.
So moved.
Do you recall that, Brandon? How did that, or Ray, did you, do you recall how that salt shed expense, it went to bid? I recall it went to bid. And then it was a project that was taken up, I'm not sure. I, I recall making the decision to do it because it had to be done. So it wasn't handled by a grant or anything like that?
It was, it was decided by the board at the time, I don't know if there was an actual vote or not, to have to come out of the rainy day fund, but it was paid for, I believe, through the general fund, and the general fund is supposed to get reimbursed. Because no money came out of the highway department for it.
And so that's what, that's what the motion is.
I don't know.
I'm, I'll make that motion.
Motion been made, is it seconded?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to transfer twelve hundred and, twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So where will it come from? Take it out of the rainy day funds?
Yeah, its official title is the unspecified reserve.
And be deposited into the general fund?
Yes.
For the purposes of the salt shed? Let's put a, let's put a thing on it so we all know what it is. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's go now, let's move up to ten, we'll talk about the highway fund now. Let's uh year end and the current uh FY twenty-two update. The reason why I put these on here was to start a conversation about where we're headed because it's September twentieth, as far as the budget purposes go, and we need to know where we ended on six thirty uh twenty twenty-one. And then, you know, about how we're doing now as far as the budget goes. So with that, well, I, I know that we have a thing in our uh, a list of.
Way down, David.
Budgets. Yeah, I gotta go through the general fund for us to get to highway.
Thirty-five, Dave.
What's that?
Page thirty-five.
Page. It's a long way. Why don't you start, Brandon, and then we'll get questions or.
So again, this, this is on audit after five years with Sullivan Powers as our auditors. We put it out to bid and we moved forward with a different auditing firm. And they're doing our audit this year on November first. So overall in revenue, the highway department collected forty thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars more in revenue than anticipated. And, and most of that came from a state aid payment from, from the state. So the state of Vermont sent the town of Weathersfield an additional payment. That additional payment was around thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that accounts for the reason that our revenues were higher than anticipated. If we did not receive that payment, we would finish the year with four thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and then negative in revenues. So we would have, from what we were anticipating, it would have been four thousand eight hundred dollars less. And that's because one of the highway department operators is no longer working for the Escutney Water District. So the Escutney Water District no longer pays the highway department for those services. He didn't want to do it anymore, and so we ended up hiring Olivia as the backup water operator. Expenditures, overall, the highway department expended ninety-six thousand dollars less than anticipated. And the majority of this came from personnel, paving, and salt. So the highway department did not pave in FY twenty-one, leaving fifty thousand dollars in this budget line item. Additionally, the highway department was not fully staffed during FY twenty-one, leaving forty-six thousand in personnel. So what we believe the total fund balance is in the highway fund is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Let me ask a pretty fast question here about when it says that that much money is left in expenses for personnel. Is that healthcare included, is that in totality?
It is.
So salary and benefits?
Correct.
Okay, good.
And that's because, you know, we were down a couple of guys, so during that time, we're not paying benefits, we're not paying wages.
And it, I would remind the board that it was, it was months, it wasn't for the full year. So it was a matter of, it was a matter of days and months, however you want to quantify that number, that he put that number together. So it's taxes, salary, benefits, whatever it was.
Um, and then as far as this year goes, we are not fully up to date. But there is, um, you know, similarly in this year, we haven't spent any money in paving. Um, and there was a, there is a gap in personnel, again. So there is savings in those two lines so far.
When, when Brandon and I have had the conversation about this, and there's, there is a warning. So this number looks a little bit out of the ordinary because it is. Having said that, um, when you scroll down to page, when you get into all the colors here, the, the purple and the green and whatever on our sheets, there's a couple of things to realize. Number one, we did just hire the two new men. They are going to take salary and benefits and ta- and healthcare and whatnot. So that number is going to completely diminish what the, what the savings was at the big, at the end of six thirty. In addition, when you look at things like uh diesel fuel, that's changed dramatically and we did not budget to as, to assume that that was going to happen. If you look at.
Eight, page thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Twenty, twelve, seven, one oh one, fifty-one, ten.
Right. It's significantly up and it's going to be, and I think it might go a little bit higher. So th- those are the kind of things that are, have got to be. Now, we passed the budget, obviously. And, you know, the, the budget is going to run through um six thirty of twenty-two. Uh, but if we, but the year-to-date, we've already spent forty-four thousand dollars on diesel, and we only budgeted fifty-five thousand, not even winter. I mean, that, that number will be significantly higher than what's in there. I mean, we can work through all these things, I'm just cautioning the board on, on, we're gonna, I, we need to be aware, and that's why I want to have this discussion, and we're going to get it out in the open, about it's not going to be the same thing at the end of six thirty twenty-two as it was in six thirty twenty-one.
That's correct.
Not going to happen.
That's, that is correct.
Absolutely. But there, but there is money left over from, like, like the, the worker, like you were talking about. Yeah, that'll get used up now in this, this one, but there's money there, and nobody's going to go back and take that money away. That was money that was saved because it wasn't, nobody was, was working. So, and we budgeted for that employee, right? So, so it's not like, don't think that money's just, you know, that was left there is going to go away. We're not going to have it next year because we hired somebody, but that money's still there, so. We're carrying it forward, that's what they are. Right, right, right. So there's, there's some money there that didn't get spent.
Forty-six thousand dollars.
Right.
I- i- in personnel. Well, that money is in the, in their budget, they, they could use it for diesel if they need to through this, this year.
That's what I'm saying, or paving or whatever. Right. The, we did not transfer, apparently, we did not transfer the fifty thousand dollars from paving into the reserve, right? That's, because that's part of it.
We have not done that, no, because I think that request came to you a couple of months ago and, or didn't act on it.
Right. Right. So there's, that money's still in there.
So that's fifty thou- right, right, right.
Did you, so if you, if you, if we keep going down, I think, Brandon, that you did the, I don't know if there's a list of the reserve accounts, so what's in the total, for instance?
I can pull the reserve accounts up really quick.
Well, we're only going to be looked, technically, because we're on the highway, there, there's only two that matter. One would be non-motorized equipment, and then uh, I'm not sure if we have a specific paving reserve account.
So the highway capital maintenance and improvements account is the one that would include money for paving.
Okay.
And the balance in that reserve account is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and nine cents.
Okay.
What, what was that number again, Steve, please?
One thirty-six, one sixty-four, oh nine.
Thank you.
And what's the title for that, for capital improvement?
Capital maintenance and improvements.
But that doesn't necessarily just, if that's not earmarked specifically for paving, that's for all of them, so.
And then there is, if you want to know, there's a highway equipment acquisition reserve account.
Yep.
Has a hundred and fifty-four thousand, two eighty-three, fifty-one.
Now, does that, were there any, were there any, to your knowledge, were there any uh payments that were going to come out of either one of those?
In twenty.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two budget? I don't think so.
Melting out twenty twenty-one.
So there's no, there's no uh greater payment coming out of one fifty-four, there's no nothing?
No, whatever money we used for the purchase of the grader or the truck would have been, would have been taken out of those funds last year, in the twenty twenty-one year.
So, but the, so the two, so the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two budget had the payments earmarked for those things within the budget? Okay.
Right, and, and we moved um budget surpluses at the end of the year last year back into those accounts because we spent all that money.
Yes. Josh?
Uh, just clarifying, are you on to highway fund? Are you still on?
Oh, no, we're, we're talking, what's that?
Are you still on item six?
No, we're on the highway fund.
No, we're on, we're talking about highway. I moved, I'm sorry, I, I'm, if anybody was clear, we moved highway fund discussion. So we're talking about the year-end numbers, about what the balances are or not are, and, and the use of those up. So we are talking about it, go ahead.
Okay, so just to clarify, um, what was for the paving project for Kendrick's Corner? That went out to bid early this summer, those came back. What was the amount that was the lowest bidder?
Brandon, can you answer that? One hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
So currently for this fiscal twenty-two, there's fifty thousand that's earmarked for paving. You have fifty thousand that is still just sitting in the general fund from fiscal twenty-one. That needs to be earmarked somewhere.
Well, the highway fund.
In the highway fund.
It's not the general fund.
Okay. So, and then we have a hundred, I think you said a hundred and thirty-six thousand in the reserve account for that. Question for Ray, I guess, as far as paving for the roads, was there a list that was generated as far as roads that need to be done as, in a, in a.
I have a draft paving plan. The roads part isn't completed yet, but Kendrick's Corners Road, Corey Road, Sunset Boulevard, Scotty Store, right, all near the top. That's as far as I've gotten, I'd love to buy here a plan. The first road was Kendrick's Corners, it started three, we started three years ago for it. We've got culverts, I bought culverts last year, did the culvert budget for that, and then this year we finished up. With some, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, I bought some culverts, and then twenty twenty-one, I bought the rest of the culverts. These guys, you guys transferred some funds or approved the transfer for seven hundred of mine last fall.
And, and they're all installed?
Correct.
Everything, the roads completely ready for, for paving?
And we installed the four, five culverts.
Okay. So I guess my question would be if, if we're talking a hundred and thirty-six thousand was the lowest bidder?
What was that number, Paul?
Hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one. And just for anybody that wants to know, it's in the June twenty-first meeting. Was when, was when this was presented to the select board, June twenty-first meeting?
So with that being said, for that amount, potentially, obviously, we have, as long as you take that fifty thousand for fiscal twenty-one and apply that, that gives us just a remaining of thirty-six thousand. I think there is enough, there is obviously residents that live on Kendrick's Corner. That road definitely was in disarray for many years now, culverts falling in. So I, I think we were under the impression that the culverts were being done this year with the intention of that road being paved. The highway did go through, finish those culverts. The road is now even worse with the culverts being replaced. It's very bumpy, and I'm just speaking on my behalf. I personally would like, knowing what we have for funding currently, I personally would like to take and have that road paved this year if that's still possible. I would assume if it doesn't get paved this year, that it would need to be back out to bid. And I'm sure it's not going to be the same amount of money for next year when it comes back in for bid.
Brandon, did we get any, um, well, I, from what I just heard, and just a couple of things, clarify for me. Steve, you just said that, that there's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in the reserve account for capital improvements, of which paving is part of, but it's not the only thing. Buildings, I mean, it would be the highway garage, it would be other things, not, not just paving. And, so that's already in the reserve account? So the year-end surplus did not transfer an additional fifty thousand dollars? Is that correct, or is it?
Right, because you, you, the select board, have to authorize that.
Yeah, okay.
We just can't make that decision.
Now, I'm just trying to line up the money here, so it's not really a hundred, hold on, let me, let me finish. It's not really a hundred and thirty-six thousand, it, it will eventually, I think. It's not really a hundred and thirty-six thousand. It, it will eventually, I think, by the time we make decisions, and I'm not saying we're making any tonight, but we're learning, because frankly, when we look at the road list and the, and, and what Ray just said, the draft plan and everything. But, as of six thirty twenty-one, we did not transfer an additional fifty thousand dollars that was earmarked for paving into that capital reserve account. So it really won't be a hundred and thirty-six thousand, it'll really be a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Is that?
If the Board decides to transfer it.
Okay.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't think we're gonna argue about that, because obviously, we have to pay attention of everything going on with capital improvements. So was there a line item as well, then, in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget for paving?
Yes.
Okay?
Twenty-twenty-one, there's fifty thousand, we're just discussing, in twenty-twenty-two, there's fifty thousand, right now.
Is that correct, Brandon?
That is correct.
Okay.
That was, that's how Josh cut the thirty-six thousand.
Well, no, cuz I think I'm painting a better picture. I don't
Oh, no, I agree.
No, I don't, no, I
I'm trying to understand those numbers too.
No, I don't think we're short by thirty-six thousand. I think, I think we're gonna be long by a hundred thousand.
Oh, yes, yes, exactly. You have the one thirty-six to the reserve fund, potentially have fifty thousand from last year and fifty thousand from this year. So you potentially have two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars
That's where I'm headed.
available for
Capital improvement.
capital improvements in Highway.
Up to six thirty twenty-two?
Yes.
Correct.
And more if you decide to transfer more of that surplus.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, 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 uh, Josh, did you have?
I, yeah, the thirty-six thousand, as you said, that was for capital needs for not just paving, but building and so forth. So I was just looking at if you took the addition of the remaining thirty-six out of that, out of that reserve account.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, just, uh, you know, one of the things that I was looking at is, is, as far as Kendrick's Corners, is, it's pretty much was presented to us on, on, you know, June twenty-first as, um, ready to go, um, as far as, you know, Ray's done all the work on the road and everything. I do understand totally, one of the things that I think the Board wants to do, and, and Dave, Dave has been, um, trying to, to, to get this a little bit here, is to get a, a larger, bigger plan of, of, of Highway as far as paving and stuff, and, and, and we've talked about, you know, where monies are coming from. One of the things was maybe even a, a loan for, um, some of these larger projects and to get, you know, let's lump a bunch of, let's, let's say we're gonna do this in the next handful of years and get a loan out, um, and do some of that. But right now, like, for me personally, I'm looking at Kendrick's Corners as it was something that the Highway Department had pretty much set, ready to go, you know, on the list. It is, it is one of the top items on the list to get done. And, um, you know, I, again, I don't wanna lose the bids. The bids are still good for, the bids are still all good, the ones we had that were presented to us on June twenty-first, right?
I actually, one of the vendors called me today and said that if we couldn't get it in, I wanted to know where it was at, and they said if we couldn't get it in, um, this fall, on their schedule, they can do it first, they can spring it on at the same price, as long as the contract is signed.
And was that, and was that the low bid? Or?
I don't wanna speak.
Okay, I, that's fair, that's fair.
No, so, so, so anyways, that, so one of the reasons, myself personally, sitting up here, like, I, I, I'm, you can probably understand, I'm, I'm looking at maybe trying to get this road done, just because, to finish up this, and then I would like to do exactly, I think, what, what the Chair would like to try to do, is find a larger plan to encompass most of this, but, um, at least that's my opinion right, right this minute, so.
Here's what, before I take a question, here's what I, here's what I, my thought process is for, for the whole town, not just for paving, not just for Highway, not for anything. Uh, and I, and I think it, and I think it's, um, you know, as long as I've been on the farm, I use that same type of thinking. Um, when you have a long-term, um, uh, thing that's gonna last a long time, y- y- you wanna, you don't wanna use up all your cash on that particular, uh, project. So that's been my only concern about this one, to use up the whole lump almost of, of whatever the reserve account was. And I'll grant you that, you know, we're in a new budget year now, af- because that meeting that you said that this was taken up was the twenty-first of June, before our year-end.
Yep.
So, we have an additional fifty thousand in the year of twenty-one, twenty-two. I don't object to this project. My objection was the financing package, to put it together. It's just smart business to take a loan out, and when we bought the grader, I remember Brandon jumping on this, saying, well, we wanna put so much in, and then a few months went by and he said, I think you're right, I think we should've taken a little bit more on the loan and not used up our cash. So that's what I'm, I would like to work on, and if this, if we just heard what I, what I think we just heard, if, if we can somehow craft a plan that may not use up this cra- uh, the cash, I don't know what the Board's authority is. That, I don't know what everybody's thinking, but that's, that was my thought process. I don't wanna use up, so suppose another need surfaces, and then, and then we have to do the same thing. Um, although, we do have the ARPA funds, and I've gone through some of that where, uh, there, there seems to be a lot more leeway. I see hands going up all over. Why don't I, Joey, I'll take you, you haven't?
I was actually just gonna ask about the ARPA funding, as if we could maybe hold off a little bit and then potentially use that to get this whole project knocked out. Is that allowed with that funding?
I don't, I haven't heard, have you, Brandon? I haven't heard that they'll, you know, they'll honor it for like, some kind of a project like this. On the other hand, they will
Stretch.
Yeah, they would honor something that could come up with the, with the Highway building itself, something. I know, I've been down there before when I've seen water coming in the building, so that
Yeah, the roof needs to
Can I, can I make a comment?
Just a second.
Okay.
Can we take, yeah, we'll take some public comments, go ahead.
I just wanna make a comment. If you've got the money in the funds, you take a loan out, you're gonna pay outrageous interest on that, so you're gonna use more money than what you're paying. If you have the money.
We, we can borrow money for two percent.
Two percent?
Yeah, town, the town gets a really nice rate.
That's really not a significant.
Another question is, if you don't do the road, I've been in the plow trucks, the big trucks. These culverts being open, you're gonna rip them roads open, you're gonna do more damage to the plow trucks. You've got a box of money to repair the plows, then you're gonna have a bigger expense. You're gonna have to redo the whole thing. Get it done, get it out of the way, then save repair on the truck, damages.
Did you have that, it's Craig Smith, did you, right, did you have that for the record, DeForest?
Craig Smith?
Is that?
Yeah.
I got it right. Um, Josh, go ahead.
Brandon, um, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Between the general fund balance from FY twenty-one and what's in reserves right now, there's two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, plus another fifty thousand dollars for paving this year. So we actually have three hundred and twenty thousand.
I wasn't there, but
I wasn't there either, but
First of all, you can't mix the general fund with the Highway Fund.
I mean, uh, Highway Fund, so the Highway Fund balance is a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
The Highway Fund Reserve Account is a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
I see what you're saying.
So that's two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Yep.
Plus, we have fifty thousand for paving.
I see what you're saying, but that's everything, that's diesel. In an FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's
I'd, I'd rather just, for now, I'd rather just stay focused on the paving or, or part of it, rather than to drag in the other. We did, let, 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 let me just clarify for everybody. There's a hundred and thirty-six thousand in the capital reserve account presently. There was fifty thousand dollars that was earmarked for paving that was unspent at the year-end of six thirty twenty-one.
Yes.
There's an additional fifty thousand dollars to be spent up until six thirty twenty-two, okay? Let's just stay, uh, try to get on to paving and then leave it there. Josh?
Um, you have cash to take and complete this project. The people that live on that road are, at, who are here on Zoom, when cars go down that road, you can hear them at, don't matter what time it is, hitting those culverts, making a thumpkin noise in our houses. You're, I understand what you're trying to do regarding trying to get, look at the bigger picture. That's been an issue with this town for years and years of trying to look at the bigger picture. You guys have had many discussions of how to take and go forward with paving projects. If you're gonna do that, I ask you, you don't take and do it halfway through this project. This project has already been started, please complete it, and then continue forward with what roads need to be done on a larger scale.
Did you, is there any, uh, just one minute before I take a question, is there any, was there any, uh, and I know this is always changing, was there any, uh, yeah, either Ray or, or Brandon? Uh, I know that you both have had an awful lot of grants, and some of them were allocated to paving, but wasn't it, like, for specific, wasn't it, it wasn't for this secondary road issue, it was for
State roads.
Or, or like reservoir road?
Constit.
Different, okay. So it was not, there's nothing to do with that, right, for clarification? Okay.
This plan was, was started, I know it's before you, and, it was started in twenty-nineteen. We had money in the fund balance, it was already at its max, and the Select Board decided to move some to the fund balance, uh, from the, to the reserve, never happened. You gotta borrow sixty thousand, question. So we had that money in the fund balance left over from twenty-twenty. And we had money in twenty-one, which is fifty K, fifty K in twenty-two. That's why we went ahead and went out of the bid and everything, cuz it was all lined up. We're trying to do it without borrowing money. I don't know if you read my draft and the, the plan about financing and stuff. To me, to borrow money for this, if you have the cash, it's kinda, we saved it up for three years, that's what we've been doing. Um, I'd rather borrow money for a guardrail project where the price of the guardrails will go from thirty dollars a foot down to twenty dollars a foot. Why don't you get more guardrails? You're gonna save the town forty grand just doing one road. Uh, that's where I think borrowing is great. This, this, the ground money on this, it saves the town money, borrow, so you go get a really great.
Like you've been asked for a while.
Um, so if you wanted to borrow the money to do this project, would you borrow the whole hundred and thirty-six, three seventy-one, or just the thirty-six, three seventy-one? What would your, uh, we, we've got a hundred thousand dollars left over from last year, and we got fifty, I mean, fifty thousand from last year and fifty thousand this year. So we've got a hundred thousand that's already right there for paving, that we know. So, i- i- in discussing a loan, would you borrow, you say you'd borrow the money, and I get that for a capital expense, and I think that's kinda what Ray's talking about. If we were doing, uh, the center road end-to-end, and it was a one-point-something-million-dollar project, you borrow the money for that. Are we talking about borrowing a hundred and thirty-six thousand to do this, or are we talking about borrowing thirty-six thousand to do this?
Well, first of all, to clarify, uh, uh, I don't know the answer to your question yet. No, but I don't know. But we've borrowed money on a lot of different things that we don't pay cash for. We borrow a lot of money on vehicles for five-year payment plans. We did buy, we did do the center road as a one-lump project, and we did borrow, and I don't even know what it was, cuz I think we had to bond for it, three, four hundred thousand dollars, it wasn't a million. So it is paid over the term of these longer-lasting projects. It's not unusual to do it. Um, I would remind you, to use up, I, I'd probably, I don't know that I would be in favor of using up the fifty thousand dollars of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, because it just began. So that you're locking yourself into not having any other bids on any other paving for until six thirty twenty-two, if you want.
Next year.
Yeah.
Which would be in our budget coming up.
No, 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 if you
The twenty-two budget for fifty thousand dollars is for this project.
Yes.
That's our, twenty-twenty-two is our paving, Kendrick's Corner was our twenty-twenty-two paving project.
I'm getting that, but there wouldn't be any other projects for paving, you wouldn't have any money.
But it wasn't intended to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out. Uh, Joey?
You can go ahead first, Paul, if you want.
Well, two, two, two questions. Uh, first, on that, that's fine, but then if you need it, you take a loan out. I mean, there, there's
Well, then we're back to where we are now.
No, 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 I mean, if you, if you're worried about, if you, if you're worried about, well, we need to leave fifty thousand, I, I'm not saying use it all up either, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent for using all that up either, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that, but my point is, then the analogy that you gave about, well, I wanna do this, well, then you just go back to the loan that we talked about that you wanted, you'd wanna do anyways, but my question on the loans is, what is the process and how much does that cost? Like, I know if you go, personally go get a mortgage or something, you know, you gotta pay two thousand dollars and do all this. If you wanted, cuz ideally, I, I, I am for looking for a longer-term plan of, of getting a, a larger loan to say, over the course of this many years, we're gonna pave these things that we've got in, 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 in the queue, but I, I, I agree with that. We've already started this. If we decided we wanted to do a loan here, what would that cost us, or how would that? I mean, how does that work? Obviously, it's like two percent, but, but
I mean, well, I mean, it's, it's probably closer to three percent, but it's as simple as calling, calling the banks and, and having them process the loan.
Right, so
They're going to require, there's, generally, to borrow money, you need a vote.
Here?
No.
Oh, the town, okay, okay, okay.
Um, there's an exception for Highway, and off the top of my head, I'm not sure if it's just for Highway vehicles or if it's for Highway projects. I'm pretty sure that you can decide to buy a Highway vehicle without public approval, but I'm not sure that you can decide to do a paving project without public approval.
Okay, so, might not even be able to.
You might need a vote, you might need to have a special election. Well, I guess by the time you had a special election, the paving season would be over.
Well, and that's, and that's, that's my point, too, personally, so.
Could be an exception for this, I'm just not sure that
Next year's budget, you have to automatically add the payment, whatever it's gonna be, for how many years, you have to add that, so you have to increase your budget.
Right. Cuz i- i- in Ray's plan too, uh, one of the things he's talked about was actually taking, taking the, um, the, the loan that we have right now, and, and after that's paid off, is taking the payment that we normally would be paying on that loan and, and, and keep that into a budget too, um, which we can talk about later, but I'm just saying, well, you know, that could be in the future money too, but, um, so, and I don't, I don't know. Did you, well, I think I would know, no, Tracy, go ahead.
I have two questions. First one is, wasn't it June twenty-first this was brought up? And it hasn't been brought up again, and it's three months later? Why is that?
I guess because our year-end is six thirty, and then we had it, uh, we had a, uh, the young girl that was in finance left, and then we advertised for a new one, and so it's a matter of getting all of our year-end balances and financial information together, in order to be able to make a decision. Obviously, since that time has passed, that better information has come in, uh, it looks like anyway. Um, so, that's exactly what happened.
My next question is, what is everybody else's opinion as a Board? Who did you wish?
Mike?
I'm gonna make a motion to use fifty thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget, fifty thousand from twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and transfer thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from Highway Capital Maintenance Improvement Reserve and pave the road.
And, man?
Yep.
Um, on that motion, you might wanna also award, cuz we haven't officially awarded anybody, so if you go with that price, that's the person
And that would award that, that's the price from Pike Industries, based on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that.
But I, can we, can we legally do that without the town voting, from what Mr. Hire was just saying, or can we just do that?
No, he's talking about taking a loan.
Okay, I got you.
Something different.
Yeah.
Did, you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, could I, if I could, just from an accounting point of view, it would be easier if we, if you voted to put the fifty thousand dollars from last year into the res- the reserve fund, and then took eighty-six thousand dollars out of the reserve fund in addition to fifty thousand dollars from this year. You got that, DeForest?
No, to do that.
I follow that.
Oh, let, let, let's, let's just, I wanna identify something here, because we got, now we've got, uh, things that I view are not on the agenda, okay? So we're, all of a sudden now, we've leapt into transferring funds from the Highway Fund Year-end Surplus, which is not audited, into a reserve fund, and then make that part of a motion for action. Uh, so I want the Board to understand what's going on here. So we're like, all over, like, first, second, and third base and home base.
So, so leave it.
Well, the money wasn't, it's, it's, it's not encumbered. It was for paving to begin with, and it hasn't been moved into that account. So if that's a problem, then we'll just spend it from where it is. It's, right now, it's sitting in the Highway Fund, right? As an undesigned, it, it's just, it, it's a designated fund balance in the Highway Fund. Well, it'll go, right, it'll, all that hundred and thirty, let's be honest, just change the number.
Well, it'll go, right, all that 130, let's be honest, just change the numbers, and it's, hopefully, they're not going to change the numbers by 136,000. It'll just go into the highway fund, and then if we use 100,000 out of this year, we'll charge that 100,000 to this year's paving budget, run a 50,000 deficit, and then it'll be covered by the fund balance from last year. But it'll look like we ran a 50,000 deficit and paved it.
Steve, you're saying it's cleaner to take the 50,000 for 2021 and move it to the reserve now, than you just move all the stuff for the town clerks and all that, before audit?
But, but I will say that Dave, Dave's right, that's not, I mean, that's not on the agenda, at least, is that something that if we made, this motion went through right now, the way it is, and you wanted it cleaned up later, you could put, ask for that later, just like these other things that we've moved around, and we can move that around the next time, or? I just, I want to, I want to take care of this.
Didn't we move some other numbers that weren't on the agenda earlier?
Yeah, we did, actually.
Yeah, but if you want me to hold that right to the, to the standard, then I, we're way out of bounds on the thousands of dollars, that was for rabies, technically.
900 and something, yeah.
Well, it was a, it was a 12,000 dollar transfer, it wasn't on the agenda.
If you wait another, well, wait another two weeks, you still got to get the project done?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I mean, I don't like tripping over.
There's a motion on the floor, can you read it back?
Okay, 50,000 from FY21 budget, and 50,000 from FY22 budget, 36,000 from reserves, either of award to the Pike Industries.
I, when I, and I will not support the motion for this reason, Steve clarified for me, that then I started cringing when I started hearing him speak, about that next year would be a 50,000 deficit, or 100,000 one, this is the roller coaster that I don't like, I do like what he said, having said that, that, but it's not on the agenda, if the board would transfer 50,000 from the year-end surplus of 2021 into the reserve, which would then help cover this cost, I think there's a way to do things, and I think there's a way not to do things, so that's, that's what I think, Joey.
I think what you just said is what Steve was talking about, and then it will just show as a 50,000 deficit in the budget, right, so we take it back from the reserve account at the end of the year, to balance it out, isn't that what you mean?
No.
No?
No.
I've got another way to look at it.
Hold on, let Steve finish.
And I, not that you asked for my opinion, but I'll give it anything. I understand, I understand that the agenda is the agenda, but there are times when you have to do things, even though they aren't on the agenda, because you have to do them, and I think that if you're going to do this another two weeks, it's probably going to be the kiss of death, in terms of getting it done, but what, whatever money you don't spend, as of June 30th, or you don't move to a reserve fund, becomes fund balance, and the year gets closed out, and that's your fund balance, you can't spend that money, you run a deficit, if you want to spend that money, you run a deficit in the current year, knowing that you got the money from last year to cover it, so it's, in terms of the overall town, it's not really a deficit, but when folks look at the budget, it's like you budgeted 50,000 for paving, why, why did you spend 100,000? You can say, yes, because we have 50,000 in our pocket, so to speak, to cover that, but it, it looks different, if you move that 50,000 into the reserve fund at June, as of June 30th, and you can take it out of the reserve fund, you spend it out of the reserve fund, and it's, it's an accounting thing, and it all about, whatever, whichever way you do it, in the end, it's the same effect, but it looks cleaner if you moved last year's 50,000 into the reserve fund.
Yes, Mike.
Pretty safe to say that this bill will not be on tonight's warrant, it'll be, it probably won't even be on the next warrant, two weeks from now, correct? The 100, the bill for this paving, if, if we spent 136,000 to do this, we're going to see that on the warrant in two weeks?
I, I don't, well, depends on whether they need some money upfront.
So we could, we could transfer that money, we could put it on the agenda to transfer that 50,000 in two weeks.
You.
Because the bill isn't going to be here, we're going ahead and spend, we're going ahead with the project.
But your move, what your motion.
Didn't say what, what.
Is very specific about.
Okay.
Funding is.
Okay.
You just want to approve the project.
Okay, all right.
Worry about the funding.
I'm going to modify the motion, I'm going to modify the motion to take 108, to take 86,371 out of the reserve account, now, and 50,000 from the current budget, and then two weeks from now, we'll have on the agenda, a motion to transfer the 50,000 from the previous, back into that reserve account.
Not going to award the bid as well, but that works.
And, well, and, yeah, you got that, DeForest?
Take 86,271 dollars out of the reserve account now, and.
Use 50,000 from the current budget.
50,000 from the current budget.
And award the contract to Pike Industries. Future agenda item will be.
Move the 50,000.
Yep.
And then in two weeks, to transfer 50,000 from FY21 surplus to reserve?
To, to the highway capital maintenance and improvement.
Yep.
Reserve account. That'll put that money back in there in two weeks.
Did you have a question, Joey?
Yeah, so once all that shakes out, we're going to be left with 100,000 in that reserve account, is that how that math will work out?
Yes, well, yes, plus all the other that Brandon was talking about, because technically, there's like 320,000 in highway, total, but that account itself will be back, that particular account will be back to 100,000 in two weeks.
And, oh, I'm okay with the second on Mike's motion, because I seconded the first time, I'll second this again.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Is there any other comments on this subject? I'm going to, yes.
Inflation, the way it's going, we'd say next year, it's going to cost 200,000 to do our road. Doing now was cheap.
That's why we have the bid process, I can't predict. Did you have a question?
Is our bid still good from Pike, is that the one that's still good?
I don't know.
Yes? Okay.
Is there any other comments on the motion, can I, can I hear the motion back, please, DeForest?
To take 86,271 dollars out of the reserve account now, and 50,000 from the current budget, and award the contract.
The contract for?
Paving Kendrick's Corners.
You want a total?
What?
You want a total for that? 103.
Well, I want the motion to be clear, I mean, we're not like, it needs to be for, for a project, it needs to be, it's not like for the air.
It's unskated, but it's.
I know, no.
For Kendrick's Corners, for 136,371.
Any other comments, did you have a?
No.
Okay. Here's why I'm confused, there's too many numbers thrown around here for me, and I'm not comfortable, so, I want, I'm not against paving, but I haven't had enough time to have conversations with Brandon, or the persons in finance, to be clear about this, and it would, I would say that very same thing on any other thing that may be on the agenda for 136,000 decision, despite what everybody's telling me about planning or anything else, or need or anything else, so that's, that's where I'm at, but the board is what they are, and you get to do it, and I just, I, I haven't had enough time to talk about what other financial implications there are with any of the budgets, regardless of what people may think that are surpluses, or, or empty holes, or some other projects that are going on. The motion has been made and seconded to, we all heard it, I can't even remember, but it's to award the contract to Pike Industry to pave Kendrick Corner Road, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, that would be me. Okay, do we need to go on to talk about anything to do with highway as far as year end, or anything other than that tonight, Brandon, or are you comfortable with?
Thank you.
What's going on?
Yeah.
For the year end?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else did you guys want to talk about?
I don't know, I'm just, I just wanted to know if there was any other thing in highway, because I want to finish the highway, and I want to move on to land use and listers and other things, so.
I'm all set, Dave.
So you're all set with highway, was there any other discussion about anything going on with highway, yes?
I just, I just have a quick question for the board on that, as the highway representative, along with Ray, you guys have had a chance to see this packet here, and I think you underst, I mean, at least what, what Dave and myself, and I think some others maybe is, looking at that plan, now that we've got some stuff here, is there anything else that anybody would like, or want, or, or, or need in this, and just so we can keep this rolling and going?
Yeah, I think in the future, it'd be a good idea to find out how many people are actually going to be affected by this money that we're spending, and focus on getting the, the best bang for our buck, so to speak.
Okay, yeah.
So if a lot of people live on, say, Thrasher Road, prioritize that maybe over, no offense, but a Kendrick's Corner Road with 10 houses on it.
Well, this is what will happen, and it happens all over with every decision that we make.
Is why not?
We happen to have a specific, no, we happen to have a specific thing going on in town, in an area town, and then we have a whole mess of people show up, and then the board has to think a lot clearer about, as, as the whole town, now, when you just raised up the question about what else you want to do, well, there's not much left to do, because the money just got burned up.
Well, no, there, there, sure there is, there's a loan you can take out, just like you talked about, I mean, you talked about that, putting it out to the town for vote.
No, but, no, I, okay. Ray?
Sorry to back to the block, Joey, the, the roads are based on the condition of the road and the cost, I'm trying to get ahead of the curve eventually with this plan, to do preventative maintenance on all the roads, and keep them at the top of the curve, instead of waiting for them to fall apart.
Yeah, I was actually lucky enough to have the day off today.
More people, but the Thrasher Road is, is five years down the road from being done, as opposed to a road that's gone.
You're going to have to do them all anyways, I was lucky enough to have the day off today, and I rode over Kendrick's Corner, and that, that road is garbage, I had a different opinion before I drove on it, than after, but that being said, what rolled through my head was the road across the street, almost across the street, Quarry Road, there's far more houses on it, it's still pretty bad, and I just don't know why something like that wouldn't have been ahead of Kendrick's Corner.
I talked to the state, and I talked to other people that do paving, and that road can wait like one to three years, and, and still get the same treatment, it won't be a full reclaim, it'll be a cop coat, and that's the next road on the list.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, because I live on that road, but, it is, that one, and it's on set, and, yeah, so, this, this is a very rough draft, as far as the roads.
Yeah, as long as you've got some way of prioritizing things, based on either financial need, or, for me, I still stand behind, I'd like to see the roads that service the most people.
Yeah.
Service first, regardless of condition.
I, I don't want to see a road end up like Penny Hill again.
Well, that's pretty much where you're at, at Kendrick's.
Right, but I don't want it to go to dirt.
Right, right, I mean, a few more plow trucks over it, and that's what it's going to be, but.
Yeah.
And there is, and if I'm, if I'm correct, too, even after all this is done, there's still 100,000 left in for, for repairs, or.
Six months, we're going to go another budget, too.
Right, so there's still some money there, it's not like, it's all poof and gone, but, you know, that's okay.
100,000 is not much when it comes to paving, though.
No, not at all.
But, you, you can apply that same standard to the job we just did, 136,000, it's not much to pave a road.
That got us three quarters of a mile.
Did you have a question, Ray?
I just was wondering, anything else on the agenda you'd like me to say?
No, I, that's why I asked Brandon, if there was anything to do with highway, any other conversation, thank you, nothing, Brandon? Nothing?
I have anything.
Okay, good.
If you always call, it's awesome, thanks.
Can you pave that?
That's a full reclaim.
That's going back to dirt.
Yeah.
Let's go to the general fund, the reason why I moved general fund on for any current fund balance, or whatever's going on for the current year, was to coordinate number seven and eight with that discussion, so, listers and land use are part of the general fund, so I don't object to talking about six, seven, and eight altogether, or, you know, obviously, I don't want to talk about, not that I don't appreciate them, but either the town clerk, or the, or anything else besides land use and listers, but, with, with any talk about discussion between the, either the combination, or the separation of listers and land use, or however anybody is imagining that may evolve, we do have to take into consideration about what the numbers, the financial implication was at the end of 630, 21, and for this particular year, yeah, so, that's the reason why I warned it, like I did, obviously, we're jumping all over the place and making decisions that are not on the warning, and I don't know where I'm at with that as the chair, so, I've been kind of friendly here, and I'm kind of disappointed, so, I think I may, um, think about what I'm doing, is there anything that you'd like to say about, uh, land use or the listers? Brandon?
Do you want me to go through the general fund, or do you want me, where do you want me to start?
Well, it's 8 o'clock, and the, why don't you, I, I scrolled down through here, and the fund balance as of, or the alleged surplus, we'll call it that, the only question I had was, you took the, uh, year-end surplus, and by the vote of the Board of Civil Authority, you allocated 21,000, or some such a number, from a decision that was made, from the general fund, so my question is, could you not take that from the fund, apparently, that was set up for property tax losses instead?
Uh, so, we have not booked this amount to the FY21 budget yet, but it happened on like June 28th, so it's, when we do, it's going to reduce the fund balance anyway, and again, this is an unaudited fund balance, so, basically, what I'm saying is, from, from what I've gathered, I believe there was 76,000 in what would have been fund balance before we booked that.
But that, but I have a different question.
It's going to be booked to that line, if we do book it, and it's going to show that it's, that line is deficit spent, but there's only 8,000 in it per year.
But, but you told us.
Yeah.
A long time ago, that there was, there seemed to be an account that was set up for a non-payment specifically with, I'm not going to get.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So, why then would you not take it out of that account that was made for that, instead of taking it out of the FY21 general fund?
You're talking about from the allowance for doubtful accounts?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's something I think Steve and I will have to talk to the auditors about, I think.
Sorry, if you.
Nope.
That didn't, it didn't keep pace, and I don't know why, um, so what, what the auditors did three or four years ago, was they basically, based on the agreement that we had with the abbots, they basically said, well, you're never going to collect that money, right? And that's true, we were going to forgive the abbots taxes, so they basically wrote that off as an uncollectible account, so we have an allowance for uncollectible accounts, but, the abbott property has still continued to have interest and penalty assigned to it every year. it every year. So, one would have assumed each year the auditors would have increased that allowance based on the interest and penalty, but they didn't do it. And I don't know why and I don't have access, I don't really want to call them, um, because I think our relationship is done with them and that might be the best for everybody. Um, but that allowance has not kept pace with the interest and penalty. I think it is safe to say that whatever we reduced, we, we have to charge the general fund the difference between what we're abating and how much that allowance got increased over the last few years. If that makes any sense at all.
Well, so, I'm, I'm sorry. So, at some point, someone in the office said, yeah, we're never going to collect this and it's okay just to forget about it? Or was there an official vote?
No, no, there was an agree, the agreement that the town had in, in effect with the abbots was basically that they were, we were going to forgive their taxes.
I don't, I'm so, I'm, I'm really, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding, but I didn't think that agreement was, that there was an official agreement yet. I think that's what we were all talking about here and, and all this paperwork that we had on this property and everything else.
Yeah. Wasn't there, I don't want to rehash the whole thing, but there was a signed, written agreement with the abbots.
A purchase and sales agreement, twenty-fourteen.
Right, right.
The que, the question is this. The question is, apparently, it can't just be forgiven, that the other people in Weathersfield had to make up the difference on the books.
Well, but the, that was, the auditor, what the auditor saw was we have an agreement, the town has an agreement with a purchase and sales agreement with this property and we're never going to collect.
But that's now, now it's null and void.
Well, that's, now it's different. Now, but based at that point in time, they said, you're never going to collect that $69,000 in taxes. So, to have that on your books as an outstanding receivable is not appropriate. So, they basically wrote it off.
But, but by writing, by quote-writing it off, did they handle it like any other bank would do, which mean, or a credit card company, which means that they charged the other people that amount of money? That's, it's not lost. It was made up through tax rates for all the years.
That's, that's what, that's what happened. They expensed it to the budget.
Yep.
Took it out of our, our, our general fund.
So basically, two, two cents.
And, yeah. And that, right.
On the tax rate.
That allowance should be equal to whatever the balance is that's owed from the abbots after this $20,000 gets removed. And so, some of that $20,000 might come out of that allowance. But we need to have this conversation with the new auditors because who knows what their opinion of the whole thing is going to be.
There's just a fundamental thing that's rolled around in my mind since I found that out was, I don't think the auditors, God bless them, I don't think they have any authority to set up such an account. And here's why. Any of these reserve accounts are set up by the voters of Weathersfield, not even us. Second, the, uh, delinquent tax policy actually, uh, closes a circle on every property in Weathersfield, including mine. So, there is no need for something like loan loss reserves or reserves not to pay. That's called a tax sale. So, and it, it, it's, this is by Vermont law. It's not by Weathersfield or Dave Fuller or anybody else. It, it also, on, on the property taxes, moves up to the first lien holder. It's a guarantee, provided that you don't let somebody go out on your tax bill that's more, worth more than, uh, your tax bill is more than the property is worth. That's the only thing where you wouldn't be able to recover. So, let's say you had a $10,000 tax bill on a property that was worth $1,000. But as far as our policy goes in the delinquent taxes, that policy is airtight and covered for the town by holding a tax sale.
And that is why, under normal circumstances, you would not have an allowance for uncollectible taxes. Because you're going to collect the taxes one way or the other.
That's right.
But there was a signed purchase and sales agreement where the town said, you're not going to have to pay these taxes.
Go ahead.
Pay, pay attention because you may need to stop me on this one.
Okay. Yeah, get that out. I should have brought my big one. What is this midget?
Yeah.
Who stopped?
Say, yeah.
Is it that easy?
So, um, so if that debt were collected now, it would generate a surplus.
Oh, that's, yes.
I, I was cautious about how I worded it. I didn't.
No, I don't. But here's where I was going on the whole discussion. So, Brandon has taken $20,000, which the BCA or.
I haven't yet.
Well, no, but it's on the table.
Okay.
So, the Board of Abatement, uh, granted twenty, or $21,000. Now, you know, I, I thought the next morning that, that I should have gone in to ask for reconsideration for that one because I, you know, it's like, what happened?
We didn't know about that.
Didn't know anything.
Yeah.
And so, um.
My, my, me too.
So, truly, a property, it doesn't happen, I don't want to use names, I wish it was mine, got forgiven $20,000 of, well, whatever tax obligation it was, and it's not going away because there was a vote and the case is closed. So, despite what we do or not do, even under a tax sale, nothing, that $20,000 is gone.
Yeah.
And the Weathersfield residents have to make that up or already have. And I could call, you know, in that specific case, I'm ready to argue to say, you know, for the burden or the pain that we've caused that property, we just, we just awarded them some, some of the town's harm by doing that. We allowed them.
Yeah.
Some consideration for hardship. So, you're going to look into whether or not you can allocate that? I'm just trying to save money under the FY twenty-one budget, just to say where it comes from. You want to, you, you think maybe that the $21,000 would be lower than that.
Yeah.
So, let's move on to li, land use or to listers or whatever. So, recap for everybody. I'm sure that everybody knows now that we appointed Barbara Thomas as a lister. She's agreed to come in and work 10 hours a week.
She has.
Stuck up her hand and volunteered.
And she's coming in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday between ten, uh, she gets out of work at the school at two-thirty. So, we've allowed 10 minutes to get here and she works two-forty to six o'clock Monday, two-forty to four-thirty Tuesday through Thursday. Um, the board also appointed Nemrick as our assessor. They came in, um, last Thursday and we held a meeting with Alexis, Carolyn, Barbara, Suzanne, and the representative from Nemrick that was, uh, appointed by Nemrick to be our assessor. Um, so that is running us $24,000 annually. Um, so we, we in, or I anticipate, or project to June thirtieth, that we'll spend $38,944 in that line. Um.
Is that 2021 or is that 2022?
That's this year. And that's, that's right on target with what, what we budgeted. So, when I put together the plan, I put together the plan under the same amount that we had to budget this year.
Okay. Let, let me ask you a question for, at least from the time that, so, so we're, we're entering in what I'll just be friendly and call it like a transition, whatever the lister, uh, thing is evolving. Has there been any questions from residents or feedback about that?
I haven't received anything. We still, we still have a lot of work to do in that office.
Okay.
And we haven't, we have to appoint a nine-one-one coordinator. Um, and we just held that meeting with Nemrick to determine who's responsible for what. Um, so I haven't heard any feedback personally. That doesn't mean there hasn't been any feedback.
So, has there been any, uh, anything as far as, so, we don't want the office to fall behind. We want to kind of measure somehow so that we don't get, oh, that didn't get done on time or something else. So, is there some kind of a, a plan? I think that you told me that Carolyn had come in and said, you know, to, to try to be helpful about what may be done. So.
Yep.
I, I don't, I don't even pretend to know what that is. I just want to ask the question about, you just went over the finances and it's about what we just passed for a budget or, or whatever, for, for, for salary?
Yes.
Has Alexis decided to come in for like 10 hours a week or?
No. Um, we're still in those discussions right now with what's on the paper is what we have in place. Um, in addition, we have, um, Carolyn, I'm contracting with her, um, and, and she's doing temporary assessor services as well.
Okay, so ju, just so the board knows, I, I don't know if any of the other members were at that present, at the, at the Jay Stevens hearing. Um, Alexis was there and I was very, very happy to hear her contribute in, in a thoughtful way that I was not aware of. So, she knows some things that she had to straighten Jay out on a couple of things and I really thought that that was impressive. I don't know that she's ever been given that ability to do that, but I really liked what I heard. So, as far as that goes, I would encourage her if she's interested in participating more. I, she had whatever information down. I know that Carolyn was there, but she piped right up. She said, no, 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 that's not true or something. I said, huh, that's, that's, that was pretty good. So, um, but as far as the work goes, is there a way for, for the you monitor so that, like, we don't, like?
Yeah, we're, we're monitoring everything and Nemrick's here to do their job per contract. So, um, I'll keep the board updated as we move along, but I'm pretty confident with what we have in place, given the circumstances.
Okay. Now, let's move to, I guess, we'll move to land use, right? Everybody, anybody have any questions about what listers are doing? Because the, the conversation that we had before was whether or not that was going to evolve into something that was going to be shared with land use or a mix or not or something. I know the planning board is looking for direction because they need to interview some candidates for land use.
So, in this case, um, again, just to recap, the Planning Commission nominated, the Select Board appointed Alexander Taft from Regional Planning as the interim zoning administrator. Um, similar to the last contract, Regional Planning charges the town $30 per hour for these services. Um, so currently, um, he's working 10 hours per week at a thirty, $30 per hour rate. Um, the administration handles the remaining workload this position requires, including filling Planning Commission and ZBA meetings and the day-to-day operations of the office. Um, so Alexander Taft is appointed as the zoning administrator, but he's not in the office. Um, so when phone calls come in, we handle the phone calls or we send them Alex's way. Um, he's taking care of the email and also working with the Planning Commission currently, um, on two public hearings. So, um, we've also contracted with DeForest Bears to build the foundation in the office for the next land use administrator. Um, she did pass out, uh, or I passed out two pieces of paper here, um, and one of her tasks was to, from her experience in the office, um, and experience in town, to develop a land use administrator job description. Um, so the one in your packet, I actually gave to her and then she converted that in addition to her knowledge and experience into this, um, which I think is well done. Um, so you can see she's broken it down into a task list. Um, and then there's a separate one, like a short version of the, of the job description. Um, so this is the job description we have to work with right now. Um, is there any other questions? I guess I can offer this. When, when the position, for, for FY twenty-two, the position was budgeted for 30 hours at $23.50 per hour. Um, to date, we've spent $3,056 in the administrative officer line. We've spent another $2,200 in temporary land use officer services. Um, so we have remaining in the line around $31,500.
First question out of the gate, same question for you as the listers. Uh, have you heard any feedback from the public or has there been, is, is the permit process or something to that effect, uh, been, is it okay? Is it, is it being handled? Have you gotten involved or what do you know or not know as far as the public of Weathersfield goes?
In my opinion, given the circumstances, the office is in really good shape, especially after DeForest went into that office and she seriously cleaned things up in there. Um, so I'd.
Thank you.
I'd just really like to thank her for that. Um, and she's still, she's still going. So, there's still stuff that she's doing in there. Um, the next zoning administrator will have a nice foundation to, to run from.
Stay in there too long, you'll just be in there permanently.
Um, with that said, this is a temporary arrangement. Um, so we have to figure out what we're going to do moving forward. I'm sure Regional Planning and DeForest don't want to be in there forever as they have other things to do. Um, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at. However, I am very pleased with the office currently.
Joey?
I've actually heard, uh, from one person that's in the process of buying a house and he's having a little bit of trouble getting some of the info he needs and.
Okay.
Kind of has a lack of direction, um, both him and his realtor. Mainly, he's trying to find out what his tax bill is going to be and where his house is assessed at and that kind of thing.
Yeah, if you wanted, send it my way. Just give him my cell phone number and tell him to give me a ring.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Paul?
Um, so, right now, the, the land use administrator, um, hours is, is 30 hours a week. That's what it's been.
Yep.
It was a little lower. Again, it moved up a while ago, up to that, right?
It was 24 hours in FY twenty-one and then we moved it to 30 hours in FY twenty-two.
So, so right now, it's, it's, and that's still considered part-time, correct? No?
Uh, I think we can, I think per the personnel policy, 30 hours is considered full-time. Um, I think. I'd have to take a look, but.
Insurance included then?
Yeah, I believe they kick in at 30 or maybe it's 32, but I'd have to confirm that.
All right. I, I would be interested in that. And then, um, there was, there was, um, when, when the land use administrator went from full-time to, um, to part-time 24 hours, um, there was a, uh, amount of money that was allotted to go towards helping, um, with services in, in the office. I think it was, was it $5,000, I think, dollars or something?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. We, we, uh, we voted a little while ago to actually, um, to, um, give that, use that money at, for the, the, the last, uh, land use administrator to help with digitizing stuff. Do you know where that is? Is, did we use all that? Did it just get absorbed in? Is there still some of that money available?
Yeah, that, that's done in FY twenty-one, but in FY twenty-two, the year that we're currently in, there's $3,500 in there. Um, and that $5,000 that you're talking about from FY twenty-one was expended.
Okay, okay.
And I think we're going to be.
Now, did you see?
I think if I recall, that that was used not to, to, so that it, that didn't hit the threshold of the hourly thing for benefits, but gave additional work on a contract basis.
I, I think so. I think so too, that, that where that played out. So, that's, I'm just trying to understand where we're at with.
I think that was a creative way to increase the hours, but not the salary or, or whatever trick or something.
Yep, yep.
I, I just think that that was done on an individual basis.
Yep.
Where do you want to be at, Brandon, with this for tonight? Because it's 20 after eight. And I know you just said, I need a, whatever, I need to go figure something out, but I'm not sure that that's the answer that, that we need. I mean, there's like 17 people that have put their names in for an application.
Yep.
Um, I'm not, I, no, I've said this before and I'll say it again. I've participated in planning board meetings. I'm trying to coach Brandon into not attending as many meetings as he is. I don't think the land use administrator, even in the past, and I, and I'm going to go back to two or three of them now, has needed to be at the planning board meetings as much as they are. I don't, I've participated. I, I don't see them contributing as much as the members of the planning board do, who are all coming from different places. They're more of a, a paperwork organizer after the meeting. And they have to do that. Some do a lot better than others. Having said all that, I, and given the listers the way they are and, and, and it's going to be a year to evolve out of that, I'm not on with the, uh, the combination of this. The, the departments, the land use or the assessor, I'm, I'm a little bit unclear about that right at the moment, but I, I don't think we're going to get anybody to work for $23 an hour, given the situation that we're in now. Nobody's applying for work. So, he, he just already said that, Brandon already just said that the, uh, plant, regional planning is at $30 an hour. Um, I'm okay with developing a plan or having him do it between the, the manager and the, and the, I don't, I guess it's our job to, to do it. I was just going to say the planning board because they're, they're the job is to interview. To craft a similar type agreement. To craft a similar type agreement as we had with the, with the other, in the other budget, and then let the individual know that, for instance, that they work twenty-four hours a week, but there's also something like five thousand dollars on a contract basis to do other work located in that office. That's where I'm at. So...
I don't, I don't fully know where to be at in this situation. In this situation, we have thirty hours a week at twenty-three and a half dollars an hour. And we hit, when I advertised it as part-time, not a lot of people applied. But that doesn't mean there's not people out there that'll work part-time.
Well, but when you advertised it, you, you, you just said that you advertised it for twenty-three?
When we received seventeen applicants, we didn't advertise it with a salary nor hours. So I removed those two variables, and then it produced seventeen applicants. I don't know if that's coincidental, it's totally speculation.
Okay, let me try to walk the board through benefits to salary.
Yes.
Okay. And the, and the value of benefits. And I'm only talking about healthcare. Let's assume that you're on the two-person plan. Maybe on the family, but let's assume for a moment that someone comes to work for the town on the two-person plan. That's costing us about twelve thousand dollars a year, okay? That's a fact. The fact is that they work about two thousand hours a year. Get two weeks paid vacation. Okay? Fifty weeks, forty hours a week. That's six dollars an hour for healthcare. Just do the math backwards. So we're not going to get anywhere by asking somebody to come in at twenty-four hours a week and to ask them twenty-three dollars an hour. Because we're really probably on the same if we up that to thirty dollars an hour, because I just said six dollars an hour. And I bet we get some applicants. I think we need to try something, or let the, let the planning board have some information tonight, when they interview candidates, because they got seventeen, and they asked for in a letter, and I don't know if I got in this packet or not, I think I did, about what we have to collectively do to let them do their job.
And I also think, considering, considering the audit hasn't been done, and considering if we do move it to full-time, we're talking about thirty-eight thousand dollars in addition to what's budgeted this year. I don't think...
That would be full-time.
That's if it's full-time.
And that would also be with a family plan benefit package.
You have to expect the worst.
Yes. No, I heard, you're right. I had forty.
Okay.
Thirty-eight. It's in that ballpark.
Yeah, the family plan is twenty-five thousand.
And that's an increase, we're talking about. If you went to full-time and they had a family plan.
I think with, with this job description, now that we have this in place, I say I re-advertise the position one more time. We have the land use office covered right now, and I feel pretty comfortable with how it's operating. I say we give it another thirty days and then see what we have for applicants then.
So you want to re-advertise it for, for thirty hours at twenty-three dollars?
Uh, I'd say, yeah.
No.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I want to clarify things and then kind of, like herding cats, I'm herding cats tonight.
I'm tending to agree with Dave. If you're going to, if you're going to stay part-time, you're going to, you're going to have to bump that.
Yes.
Okay, but, but, and that's, if that's what the board wants to do, that's what the board does. We'll pick a number and say it's part-time. At least we have clarity on what we're doing when we sit down with the applicants. That's, that's what we're asking for.
That's all I want to do. Did you have a question, Joe?
Yeah, I know somebody who actually looked at the job description before you changed it, and the fact that it was part-time is what turned them off of it. Just so you know.
Well, it, so we know. He already knows.
I mean, I really...
My point is that this is, I think, a waste of time discussing it unless you're going to advertise it full-time. Because you're going to go back to zero applicants the minute you advertise it part-time.
And we have to, if we're going to do that, we have to go into understanding you're adding to next year's budget. Almost, well, the projection is up to about forty thousand dollars.
Yep.
With wages and benefit package.
I like what Dave was saying, is where, if you paid more per hour, for less hours, you might entice somebody with that thirty dollars an hour for twenty-four hours a week, maybe. Or ten, or whatever.
I think we need the thirty hours a week, though.
I think we need the thirty and the thirty dollars an hour. I think those, those, together, those two things might work. Thirty dollars an hour and thirty hours a week, which is still your part-time, no health care.
Yep.
Right? Because you're under the threshold.
And that's a nine-hundred... Pretty good.
Yeah, it's forty-six thousand eight hundred annually.
For thirty hours a week, that's pretty good.
Is the, I just heard Brandon say that he wanted to give it another month. Is that what you're interested in?
I, I think, I mean, it's, it's really up to the board. We have seventeen applicants. We've seen four to six that look, like it'd be okay to interview.
What are you going to tell them?
So maybe, I think the planning commission moves forward with the interviews, and then if you guys find a candidate that you like, I would talk about the finance, like if you want to offer them the job, then at that time, I can, I can talk about what we can pay them.
All right, so in the middle of the interview, when they say, "Okay," I'm curious, is this full-time or part-time? And how much? What do we say? It's still up in the air?
We don't know.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't, I don't mean to hammer you and put you on the spot.
I'm with you.
But that, that's, that's, that's the reason, that's the reason that we're...
You can give them a low and a, and a high, between eighteen and twenty-three.
No, I'm not in, I'm not either. I don't know where I'm in, but I'm not in on this. That's not, that's not a good thing. Joe, go ahead.
And I see what you're trying to do, is fill the position. And I get it. If it were me, I, I tend to agree with Brandon and look at a candidate that you want and say, "Where are you comfortable?" Because if you get somebody in there that you're just going to be, for the lack of a better term, disposable again, and they're, you've got to pick the one you want and make it work on their end. Just ask, "Where are you comfortable hours-wise? Can you do this? Can you make this work? This is what we've talked about, how do you feel about that?"
And my, my thing is, we can be upfront. If, if, if that's the way the board wants to go, that's how I would lead off that interview. If they want to get off the interview after, because we don't know, then that's fine. But at least to start with. Like, we just need to know what to say and didn't want to look completely unprofessional and go, "Yeah, we don't know."
Just lead off with, "This is up in the air, we've talked about a couple things, we like you, we want to make it work for you."
Like to see, I mean...
Where are you comfortable?
But does that still leave the door open for part-time or full-time? You know, what, I mean...
I would talk dollars per week and let us sort out that.
Yeah. And, and if I may, my other thing, too, is I'd really like to see the direction, I'd like, I'd like to see about the board's idea of this full-time, part-time, because we keep throwing this around, like, the job is just throwing some permits out to some people and that's it, and we don't really need to do this, and we don't really need to do that, and, you know, I, I don't know, I, I haven't been here all my life, but I've been, I've been doing planning commission for five years and...
I've done more candidates for land use administrator than that.
Yeah, and there's, and there's a little bit more to it than just, than just that. So, you know...
I'd be happy to make this tonight. I don't agree that you interview people that don't know what it is. I've never had a job and I don't want one. Okay, so, so you don't go into an interview and then the person says, "Well, what am I interviewing for?" "Well, I don't really know, it's a part-time." I don't like that idea. I don't like that at all.
Are you talking the difference between thirty hours a week at twenty-three fifty and thirty hours a week at thirty bucks? Is that what...
Well, I didn't make the leap to thirty hours. I was stuck, I'm personally stuck on twenty-four. That's three eight-hour days here in the office, okay? So let me finish, because I want to clarify for Steve. Because the ad, though, said thirty hours at twenty-three dollars an hour, right? So there is, there is a monumental difference between advertising it at thirty, thirty hours a week for thirty dollars an hour. That's going to generate some interest. So, but that means almost that that person, but you've got to understand where I'm at. I like to think of the town as a whole and measuring everybody's work, whatever load they're doing. So when people, and they do, count their time in a meeting and then they don't come into the office, that doesn't really serve the public that well.
Absolutely.
So that's when I say, "Wait a minute." To, to ixne on the meetings all the time, because you're just gathering up the information. But you're here to serve the people with the permits and then go out and visit, like you said, what, whatever things that they need as far as land use goes. But it's not been advertised for thirty hours for thirty dollars an hour.
And, and, sorry, I don't want to keep it going, but you, you just mentioned twenty-four. I don't know where it went to twenty-four. It's not twenty-four. Right now, it's thirty. You'd have to take a vote from here to drop that back down to twenty-four.
It was twenty-four and it got up to thirty for this year, right, Brandon?
Right.
Well, it, it... It was.
Absolutely, but it's every, you, you don't, you don't just change, so, so next year it's zero and then we have to figure out what it is again? It's thirty hours. That's what this job is right now, until the board votes it differently, correct?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what he, I don't know what he advertised it for.
No, it, but it doesn't matter. You can't just advertise it for something different.
Right now, it's ten.
He can't. It's already thirty hours. How can you just do that?
I believe it's in the, I believe the budget was built based on thirty hours at twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty cents an hour.
Right.
That's what's currently authorized by the budget.
Right.
That's correct.
And until this board votes something different, you can't just go to twenty-four hours or something.
I'm sorry, but we're at ten hours a week.
You also can't go to thirty.
What's that?
You also can't go to thirty.
What, thirty dollars, right?
Yeah. Because you're...
I have a question about that. At the thirty hours, we're paying this person to go to a meeting as well. I think this is where Dave was going, too. Is it possible to say, "Don't go to the meeting," and make it a twenty-four-hour job? Week?
I say no.
I, I say no, too, but that's, that's just my opinion.
But with all due respect, I'll probably strike a barb here. Both you guys are clouded on this whole thing.
No, we're on the planning commission.
You're sort of on the planning commission and you want that person there. I don't know why. If I was on there, I don't need to be.
No, no, no.
I don't need that.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I don't mean, I'm not necessarily saying I want them at every meeting. What I'm saying is, twenty-four hours job, I believe that the job is more than twenty-four hours, regardless of whether you're at a meeting all the time or not. I do admit that there's some meetings that you probably don't need them there for, but there are some that we do, and we can, we can work that out. But my point is, is that this is, there's more to this office and to this town and to things that are going on than just handing out permits. And, I mean, God, we don't, we hardly do any, go down any of these roads, I guarantee you're going to find all kinds of things that are not, you know, up to code or up to things. So we want to, and people know that. And that, I'm sorry, there, things are happening. So there's stuff that we haven't been doing in this office. And we need to start doing it.
I suggest you look at the short version that was created here, because that kind of focuses those tasks that these people have to, I mean, zoning by law subdivision regulations in town plan. All, all of these things have statutory regulations that we have to, we have to follow and work on. And we rely on them to do a lot of the research for us. We're volunteers. We sit at the board, kind of like we do tonight. And, and somebody like Brandon or Dave comes in with all the information to give us, it's, and many times, it's us asking them questions and they go do the research and then bring it to us. So that we know what to do.
And my point is, if, if Brandon didn't give us a packet tonight, I don't know how this works.
Yeah.
I mean...
It's not any different.
I don't understand then how someone is doing that job in ten hours, currently.
Where's ten hours?
The temporary.
It's temporary.
That's, that's all that they'll, Regional Planning will give us is ten.
Right.
So I'm attending planning commission meetings, I'm attending ZBA meetings, and then we're handling the day-to-day operations of the town. So we've basically absorbed that work between me, Suzanne, and Olivia.
And DeForest.
And DeForest.
And we're not asking a lot of questions right now, we're just trying to get a few ducks in a row.
And as far as meetings go, too, I just, I just want to say, when you have a good, when you have a land use administrator that understands what's going on, they contribute more than just sitting there. And the few meetings that I think people might have seen are different. Some of the land use administrators, at least in my five years that I've been doing it, they've sat and they've participated in the meeting in a way, and they brought in, we sit there and talk about wording on how something should be. They, they, the good ones come in and they bring us what it should be. And five other towns have it the same way, this way or that, and then we can go through it. And, and they contribute more than I'll just sit there and listen, per se. But, but I agree, they might not need to be at every single one, but...
Or they might not need to be at the entire meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we can work on that.
If you guys are going to insist that we need it this badly, then we're going to have to cut some money out of somewhere else. I mean, I don't want...
Well, like I said, it did go to full-time because we felt the need for it, and then it got cut and slashed, and then...
So we're going to have to slash something else.
Yeah, but we've got some surplus, can't we use that?
You've got to be careful with using your surplus. If, if, if we've got surpluses in the budget that need to be corrected, then we have, we might have money to move. But you don't want to, you don't want to be taking surplus money that's from like a vacant seat.
Well, I mean, just using it temporarily for, and then making it into the budget for the following year.
I mean, all, all I'm, all I'm personally saying is that I, I think we're learning more about what the position could be in the town and what it is. And, and that's all. So, I mean, I'm not also saying that in four years, this is one of the things we talked about before, that it couldn't go to part-time because the things are running smooth and everything. And, and we've got procedures in place. Like right now, I mean, we're sitting here with a checklist for, you know, for subdivisions and the bylaw says one thing, a checklist says something, and we've let, you know, things have got to get put into place and, and done the right way. So, you know, maybe in a few years, it could be dropped back down. But right now, it's not, at least in my opinion, but...
So if there's thirty hours a week in the budget at twenty-three fifty an hour, no health insurance, do, does Brandon need to try to fill the position within the budget? Or does he have authorization to go beyond the budget? And by how much? I threw out the thirty, Dave, based on what you had said over there. I didn't really put any thought into it. Maybe it's twenty-six, maybe it's twenty-eight for thirty hours.
Oh, yeah. But, and, and Dave, if I may, too, I just, I also want to let, make sure the boards understand that, and we already talked about this, though, that at least in this year, I mean, we, we have already spent money for Nemrick to do some work, which we were, initially we were talking about combining things. We've already hired Nemrick to do some stuff, and we have the lister now. So personally, I'm, I'm also thinking of just focusing on land use and not a combination of things, myself, but...
So, so, so that would narrow us to part-time and agree on thirty hours at this point. And then it's just a matter of, well, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there and not making decisions for anybody, but, and then go from there to how much? How much an hour?
I think that you usually negotiate the hourly rate during the time that you offer the job. So if you get that question in an interview, which I've, out of all the people I've interviewed, I've never had that question in the first interview.
I can understand that, but don't we have to have a number that, as, as a, as a maximum for us to...
Well, I think he was saying the range. That's where that range came from, you know, that he wanted...
In that moment, you know, after the planning commission narrows down the candidates, and then I take a look at them and, and then we talk about the hourly rate. If we know that it's thirty hours, then you have, you tell them it's thirty hours with a range.
I, I think the thing that would have been weird in the interview is like, well, I I think the thing that would've been weird in the interview is like, well, I don't even know how many hours the job's gonna be. The pay, I can say, you're in a range of here based on skill, experience, and so on and so forth.
So what would you like to see that range at, Brandon? Do you think, I think you've seen the current applications, and can sort of apply to that some sort of range?
I think between, I think between twenty, and depending on experience, and depending, I don't know the level of skills that the planning commission wants.
How we can get.
So, you know, depending on experience, depending on skill, depending on education, all those things come into play when you determine an hourly rate.
Well.
So it really, it depends on all of those factors.
The other, the other thing, the other thing, too, is the fact that I don't know if we have, like at my particular job, like we have grades, so we have like, you know, tech one through three, we have an engineer one through three.
Yep.
Like, so we just have a land use administrator, but there's gotta be some room to grow, too. You can't just hire someone and say, well, this is, this is it. There might be.
Absolutely.
You know, so, so that, there's always, it seems like there's a range, you know. I mean, I definitely don't think you wanna go any lower than what you already, they already know, and can go look at warnings and see what they're already paying somebody.
Yep.
You know.
Well, it depends on experience.
Right.
I mean, if the last land use administrator was more experienced, and we fill the position with a less experienced land use administrator, then the hourly rate's gonna be different.
We've talked about this enough. I listened to what Steve had to say, and the, it's in the budget for thirty hours a week, and at twenty-three fifty an hour, is that what it says? I gotta put my glasses on. I, I don't think we're gonna get, providing that our policy says that that doesn't include healthcare, I don't think that's enough money per hour. So I don't know if we need a motion or not to grant, and I don't know how this schedule works, but the planning board needs to get on with the job. It is temporary at regional planning, there are seventeen applicants. And I don't think advertising it again is the way to go, because we don't seem to have a direction about what that is or isn't. So we have a job description, I would, I would be okay with offering more money per hour, given that you clarify it and don't have the healthcare benefits. And I would say, if it's not thirty dollars an hour, it's gotta be twenty-eight dollars an hour.
And that's forty-three six, eighty. So what's left over now, Brandon, from the current budget? That's in here, isn't it?
Yeah, so we have, we've spent three thousand fifty-six dollars in the administrative officer line, plus we have land use, special projects, temporary zoning assistant, twenty-two hundred dollars, so five thousand. We have thirty-one thousand left in the administrative officer line, plus we have thirty-five hundred in contracted services we can use. If the board, if we find a candidate and we're gonna go over, we can use that money to make up the difference.
Well, but thirty hours at twenty-eight dollars an hour, if that were to be our cap, would be about a nine thousand dollar difference. So what you're looking for is authorization to allow that?
Yes, because we need to move on.
Yep.
Yes.
And the planning board needs to get on with the interview process, and you need to be able to answer the questions.
So I'll make a motion to set that, that wage limit, that upper wage limit at forty-three thousand six hundred eighty dollars, that's twenty-eight dollars an hour, at thirty hours.
Thirty hours, yeah. I'll second it.
Is that okay, Brandon?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that decision. And if we hire them in November, then we only have seven months left in the fiscal year.
So it'll be less than that, it'll be less than nine thousand.
So we'll come in under budget.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the financial package of land use administrator interview process at thirty hours a week, twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Maximum.
Yep.
Yep.
Negotiate.
But that's what it's gonna be, and, you know, find the right person, gotta move on.
Yep.
So the, okay, let's get this out of the way first. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the process now is what? So you hand this information off to the planning board to start the interview process? The advertisement is closed?
The advertisement is closed, planning commission has all seventeen applicants and their resumes.
Because in fairness to the people that applied under the conditions that they applied, you know, they're out there, either gonna get jobs, they're gonna leave, or they're gonna say, what, you didn't want me?
I would suggest you contact those seventeen, or at least the six people you think are you're gonna interview and tell them.
Yep.
The position is thirty hours a week, and the hourly rate is between twenty-three fifty and twenty-eight dollars an hour, depending on your qualifications. And see if any of them still wanna be interviewed.
Yes.
It'll save you time and effort. And if all six say no, then you'll know to go back out again.
Yep.
But hopefully you'll get some of them. It's a good idea, Steve, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Is there any other discussion about land use? I think we've gotten all, what we need to get out of the way for tonight. Is that, anybody have any other? The general fund, I just put it under a thing just to try to get for where the year ends might be, but it's a work in progress, it's not, the only question I had was about whether or not, and Brandon said you'd look into it, about taking out the twenty-one thousand dollars. That would be a benefit to us to be able to use in the current year, if it, in fact, is in a fund somewhere.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, let's go to the warrants, I guess, right?
Make a motion to approve the warrant, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. General fund payroll, thirteen thousand three hundred seventeen dollars eighty-six cents. Operating expense, sixty-one thousand sixty-two dollars and seven cents. Thank you, Steve. Highway fund payroll, seven thousand sixty-four dollars thirty-nine cents. Operating expense, eighteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars thirty-nine cents. Solid waste management payroll, one thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars thirty-seven cents. Operating expense, twenty thousand one hundred thirteen dollars ninety-one cents. Library payroll, nine hundred ninety-two dollars fifty cents. Oh, I'm sorry, scratch that. Total payroll, library, one thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Operating expense, zero. Library endowment, that's under operating expense, six hundred dollars. The grand total payroll, twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars sixty-two cents. Operating expense, one hundred thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars thirty-seven cents. I think I got that corrected, okay?
Oh, second, so I'll second it. Most have been made and seconded to approve the warrants on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
I just have one thing. I'm on, says page four of six for the general fund. TJ Property Maintenance, we're just paying now a invoice from January. Is that right? For a hundred and forty-one dollars?
Why?
January twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah, that was, so that invoice, I'm assuming, and I don't know for sure, but I'm assuming when the new accountant came in, she may have found it in a folder, and they didn't notify us that it was past due. So if I had to guess, that's probably what happened, and then she found it.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other business? Yeah, we gotta go into, like a motion for executive session.
Yeah, just proposed future agenda, don't forget to get that, transfer.
Fifty thousand.
Okay, yes, thanks for my.
Next agenda?
Yep.
I'm sure I'll forget.
You want to.
Is there an executive session for personnel?
Motion to go to executive session, personnel?
With the town manager. Second.
With the town managers.
All right, everyone, have a good night.